All right, we'll go ahead and get started this evening. First of all, let me say, welcome to all of you that are here in attendance tonight. And so, this is Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting, July 28, 2016. It is by 3:06 PM. And we'll start with the agenda. And the first order of agenda is the call to order and the invocation. And so, we will ask for a prayer as Councilman Fanning, she would offer a prayer this evening.
We wanted to give you the praise and glory in asking that you bless us here with your Holy Spirit. We conduct business on behalf of the people. Help us to make decisions, guide us and direct us in our minds, our laws, our spirits, in the way that he would want us to be and the decisions that he wants us to make. And bless all of our people, all those that are in need of prayer today. And I pray for them, pray to God that you can bless them with your Holy Spirit. And pray to God, pray for our Oltishtal relatives. I'm thankful that this team that are here and their visiting with us in the ceremony that we had this interest to give you the praise and glory, pray to God. You heard our prayer and you made it so that we could continue on with it, pray to God. And then, once again, pray to God, I pray that you continue on that prayer for us again and that through our visitation, that we can bring a lot of good blessings to each other, pray to God. Because we all strive to please you, like that pray to God and to honor your kindness. I pray this for my own people and for our Oltishtal relatives too, I think, pray to God. So, there's a lot of things that I'm leaving inside, but I just pray that you can fulfill my prayer for me. And I ask a prayer.
Item number two, which is the pro-call.
Bruce Pratt?
Here.
Vera Walken?
Here.
Frankie Littleson?
Here.
Angela Thompson?
Here.
Sammy Anderson?
Here.
Dawn Hearn?
Here.
Adrian Sparabushi?
He's excused.
And Leanna Kew?
She's excused. And we do have a quorum. We will move down to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda. And we have been given some additional agenda items. Yeah, and you should all have received that council email. And it's the additional agenda items K through E, after new business, after number seven, after item J. Yes, any?
Sorry about this, but all of the resolutions I did not have the one number. I missed resolution in my log.
Oh, that's right.
They're correct in your package, so they're the number I don't need. So, 63 will be 64, sorry, 64. Oh, 62, I'm sorry.
62 will be 61?
63.
Be 63, so we're moving. We're adding, okay. So, the explanation is, the explanation on the agenda is all of the resolutions starting with item number 16, 62 is actually 16, 63. And we're adding a digit, one number to every resolution. Is that correct? Okay.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
I have an addition.
Okay.
Well, a correction. We have approval of budget mod number two, CWS. That was just a reducing the award to reflect the correct award amount. So, that doesn't require council approval. So, can we omit G, item G?
Okay, omitting item G. Okay. Is that item G on the budget committee recommendations? Yes.
And I guess we need to replace it with the ICW. Replace it with ICW budget. That is. (Inaudible).
ICW welfare. ICW budget.
So, it should be approval of budget mod. Approval, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Approval of what?
Of budget mod number two, ICW. Should be G instead of CWS.
So, this is what we do. Okay. So, on the agenda, what we've done is we've added the additional agenda items K through E. We have added one number to all of the resolutions, starting with 16, 63. And we have changed on the budget committee recommendations, item G to approval of budget modification, number two, ICW. Correct?
Yeah.
Are there any additional changes? All right, we can entertain a motion. Oh, and one other thing. We are not, we are not going to do the president's reports, the business council committee and travel reports, the ED report or the attorney general report. We will just leave the travel request if there aren't any. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Frankie Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Dawn Hearn?
Yes.
All right. And so, omitting what we have omitted, we are going down to any council travel requests.
No requests for travel.
Okay.
The only thing that I was interested in is possibly the VAW in St. Paul, Minnesota. But I want to go ahead and get approval just in case I'm able to go.
Do you have a date on it?
It's August 30 through September 1st. Correction. I talked to Chelsea about it, but she's on vacation. She's talking about this next week. And she had her advocate on. There's three people. Okay. And I believe the program could pay for two other non-staff memberships. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a request to attend the Oklahoma City Veterans Administration Community Mental Health Summit in Oklahoma City, August 2nd. It's an all-day event. So, it's August 2nd.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was only interested in thanking Angela Thompson. I had contacted Chelsea with my intention of my vacation.
Okay.
That's going to be the thing made up. They're requesting that tribal council members be there also. So, that's the only one I'm interested in. I was just going to see what she was going to say about it allows the program to send three.
Okay.
This is unrelated to travel. I just realized I forgot to add another agenda item. It's the Cultural Resource Fund 2016 budget, the new grant that we got.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Thank you.
Our problem is, we don't have our copy. Okay. All right. Is that all, Frankie?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I have one, thank you.
Okay. I don't remember if I have put the direct service tribe annual meeting. It's, I believe, on the 31st and September 1st, actually same place as yours, in Rapid City. So, I'm asking for that if I haven't, if I didn't do it the last time. I can't remember. All right, any others?
Where was that at?
It's funny, self-governance was down in Portland. Direct service goes to Rapid City. Okay. Just a side note. All right, is there a motion to accept these travels?
I make a motion that we accept the travel request as.
All right, motion's based, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? All right, okay, we can move back to the agenda.
Okay, I apologize. I've been working with the program, the Cultural Resources Division, to develop their budget mod so that we can get the language program underway, the consultants, and contracts in place. And they submitted the budget to me after budget committee meeting. And it's just a formality, so I'm bringing, I would like to add it to tonight's agenda so we can get it approved.
Okay, so that'd be item Q?
Yes.
On their committee recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's the 2016 CRF budget.
All right.
Thank you. So, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add item Q.
We have a motion, is there a second?
What does the, what does CRF stand for?
The Cultural Resources Fund. Remember, they applied for like a $50,000 grant. It was awarded for 40.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And since it's an agenda item, a call for the vote.
Yes.
Frankie Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Dawn Hearn?
Yes.
And just for clarification, the reason why we are not doing the reports tonight and just going down to business is because of the visitation with our Oltishtal relatives. And so, we're trying to do this council meeting, you know, as soon as we can and go over those that want to go over to the visitation with our relatives. So, that's the reason for the reports, and we'll do all of those at the next council meeting. So, that's for clarification. So, we were, we are going to move down to item number nine, which is new business. And the first one is approval of resolution 16, 63, PBC mission statement.
I'm here to present on the PBC strategic planning, mission and vision, vision statement. Since last year of September of 2015, you guys have been in, I think, about seven planning sessions or strategic planning sessions, all various types of things that you want the direction that the business council would move forward with. One of the first tasks that was done was creating a mission and a vision statement amongst the council members at the time. And it was noted last time on July 20th that you guys approved the vision statement and the mission statement that was addressed back in September 15 of 2015, which is somewhere in corrections. The first mission statement reads, "Through faith, trust, and guidance of Tiwahat, we shall provide effective and exemplary leadership to promote, protect, and enrich the lives of members of the Pawnee Nation by exercising our inherent sovereign rights while maintaining traditional and cultural customs in respect of the Pawnee people." And this is an association. This is not a Pawnee Nation mission statement, it's a Pawnee Business Council strategic planning mission statement, in which you guys want to move forward.
I just have a couple of graphical errors on there, and those are just the commas. So, after sovereign rights, there should not be a comma. There should be a comma, however, after cultural customs. That would be my feedback. You can run it through the checker, but it don't work, I tell you. A pass. Thank you.
I know you all have, I voiced my thoughts on the resolution on the mission and vision statement. It's my opinion that the mission statement, as well as the vision statement, should be vetted by our tribal members, who we serve. And so, I just wanted to voice that in open meeting. That's my opinion. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
So, Angela, what would you suggest?
Well, my recommendation is to either table the resolutions until we get a complete strategic plan and present it to the people so that they can vet the plan and vet the mission, vet the statement. And as a whole, to me, strategic planning is a complete document in its entirety. And that's who we serve. So, I believe that we can, we can have a mission and vision statement all our own and come up with that, but until it's vetted by who we serve, it's just words on a piece of paper. Thank you.
I thought we were elected by the people. And this says it's Pawnee Business Council. We are the Pawnee Business Council. In our strategic plan, we all voted on this, that we wanted to accept this as our, as our mission statement and then our vision statement too. We've got to start somewhere. As long as I've been on council, one of my fourth year now, I've never got an email, I've never got a word from anybody asking me, hey, why don't we have a payment statement? Why don't we have a mission statement? I'm the one who asked a question. Because when I worked in property, Charlie Wild came up with the mission statement and the vision statement for our department. And I see that on the tarot, whenever you look at their email, they have their mission statement on there, what they're about, and what it states. So, I was thinking, well, this is us, we're the leaders of our people, we're supposed to be. So, why can't we, you know, if we decided that this is what we like, then why can't we present it? And if somebody doesn't like it, I'm pretty sure they'll let us know. And we can make that adjustment, you know, wherever we need to make the adjustment. I just see it as a step is moving forward with our strategic plan. That's all. And I'm, I'm just anxious to go because we've been working on it for a long time. I would just like to see some action, something, yeah, on a piece of paper, black and white. I really would, just for a step to move forward, you know, we got to keep chipping away at it. We could even put it out, you know, on our Facebook page, hey, what do you all think of this? But that hasn't been done, you know? And to me, I don't know, if somebody is really concerned about them, I think they would already let us know. And that's just why I've been in on it. And that's the reason why I'm just, I'm like, I'm hoping, you know, everybody was in agreement at our strategic planning meeting that we were going to get a resolution and bring it to council here. So, that's why it's here, and this is what we're presenting. And just like I said, I'm sure if, you know, somebody don't like it, they're going to let us know they don't like it. Or there's, you know, and I thought that, I don't know, I went in the wrong, I guess wrong, I thought that we were going to do the strategic plan, yeah, we're going to take it to the people, and we're going to give them opportunity to get his feedback on it, you know? And just like I said, it's a, it's a step for the future. But I thought, I didn't know that we were going to go to the, you know, otherwise, let's have public meetings and open it up and let everybody come up there, you know, put their opinions in at that time, you know, as far as the strategic. But I thought us as the leaders, that we're supposed to be making the plan and bring it to the people and show them, this is the way that we want to lead you. This is the things that, that we see in our community, maybe we missed it, missed something, you know, I'm sure they're going to let us know if we missed something, and then, you know, we'll go from there. But that, and because of the meeting, what we said at the meeting, that's why, you know, we have put it in the resolution and brought it to council this time.
And I appreciate your proactiveness and wanting to move it forward and getting it out there. But I, just, this is, and this is just me. And, you know, I just truly believe that it has to be vetted by the people. And I, myself cannot approve a mission or vision, or vote to, I guess, to approve a mission or vision statement without the people's buy-in. When you do strategic planning, to me, it's about who you're going to serve and how you're going to go about addressing those priorities and those goals and objectives on a short-term and long-term basis. But if it's not going to meet the needs of the people that you serve, then it's our plan. It's ours as the PBC. And yes, we are elected. We are elected to, that's why they elect us to do, to go forward. But a strategic plan, I mean, in every aspect, has to have buy-in from the people that it's going to serve. And so, and I don't disagree with you. I think it's good to be looking forward and getting things. But that's just where I stand as, as an individual council member. So, I guess we can agree to disagree then?
Yeah.
Okay. So, item number one is approval of resolution.
May I speak from the people's side? I really want to thank Frankie for going forward with this and pushing it, and I know Angela's pushing this as well. And the proactiveness, really, it's a good vision statement. I thank you for that. But let me say this. When we say we're going to put a plan together and then we're going to show it to the people and get their input, you know what that reminds me of? All these years that BIA has done that to tribes, they put their stuff together and then they come out and say, do you have any comment? But they've already made up their mind, and so we have to go with that. I'm not saying that's what y'all are trying to do, I'm just saying that's what it reminds me of. A plan, and I, this is part of my career, a plan, when you get the input from the people that's going to get the benefit of that plan, then it's not just a tribal business council plan, it's the people's plan, I think. And they're going to buy into it. And I don't think you need to have lengthy sessions and all that, maybe a couple of sessions or whatever, but get their buy-in to it, get their, get their input, and then put your plan together and then get that input for the end of your plan, go back and present the final plan. Something as easy as that, but get their input. And I guess I have a point of clarification or question for the council. So, I thought this was, is this going to be the plan of the Pawnee Business Council? Or is this going to be for the people? Or is this going to be the Pawnee tribal plan that everybody has input into? That, I need clarification. Because if it's just going to be a tribal business council plan, that's just, to me, it's just your plan, it's not our plan.
Well, how it is your plan?
It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that I'm not going to support it. It's going to mean that we, as the people, don't have buy-in to it. We haven't had the chance that you all have at your strategic planning meetings to have our little input into it. And we may agree with everything that you all do, but it's a part of community development, a part of including our people into the document that's going to hopefully guide us for the next 20 years. And that's my plan, so that would be my plan, to get input from the people.
And that sounds real reasonable. And, you know, this is, this is new. As you know, we came in last year and there was nothing. And this has taken us, this has been painful. I mean, people, you know, have had, you know, opinions about the those and the ants and the thises, and it's been painful. And we would love to be there. It is, to me, challenging. It's going to be very challenging. And to bring the people in, I mean, I'm hoping that we have input. I'm hoping that people will want to be involved. Because as you can see here, one, two, three, four, five, and I think some of you here are on business. So, you know, I get it, and, you know, we want to work cohesively with our ED and, you know, understand what the vision is for each of the programs as well, and how you get away from, you know, the funding part of it and going out and being able to leverage our own funding. So, it's going to be tough. But I think this is a start. And, you know, I respect the position, you know, of this is the people's plan. But it's also, it also gives us something to sustain us and to hang on to, to develop on. And I think that's kind of was, was the intent.
May I respond? I really appreciate that.
Sure.
And let me just clarify that I am all for plans. And all for plans, I think Dawn will tell you, the only, the last plan that the council has was in 2000, I think, that's the one I wrote.
Yes.
But we get it with it consistently in getting input from the community. So, it wasn't just my plan, it just wasn't the council's plan. It was people had their input, they had the opportunity to put their ideas out, so thank you, because I do agree with you.
We want that.
Because we like to, we want a plan. I'd like to see a plan, and I'd like to see the mission statement and our major, I'd like to see them pasted all over our tribal buildings so that we're all looking down the same road.
Sure.
You know, so I, thank you, thank you for that. I do, I do appreciate the plan.
Well, if you've got the experience and you've written before, then.
I don't know about that. This is the time, it's the time, but just, just do the plan. I just want the plan, I'd like the people back.
Well, my idea was, just like I said, this is a second stone, and then whenever we got our strategic plan together, us here, I wanted to take it to different areas of the state to where we have, you know, sizable like Oklahoma City, you know, Tulsa, have a meeting somewhere there to present our strategic plan to the people and get their opinions on it. Because it isn't nothing written in stone, it's something, it's always going to be working. There's going to be things that we're going to accomplish, and we're going to be able to take off and then maybe add more things on. But the point is, you know, getting the ball rolling. And just like this, I, you know, I asked my tribal members in my home that I live with and in my family, and I asked them. Half of them don't even know what a mission statement is, they don't know what a vision statement is, and they couldn't care less. And then, then one of them was like, well, yeah, I think I should have my, my opinion. I said, well, here, Rita, what do you think of it? Then she read it, she was like, hey, I like that, you know? And, yeah, it says everything that I wanted it, you know, that I would like for, you know, how for us to be represented. So, you know, things like that, that just goes on with my household, with my family, then isn't just, oh, well, you know, yeah, we're just going to pass this, and I don't care what anybody says.
Well, I think the other thing, Bruce, is that if you have, if you're planning on having public meetings like that, maybe you all should just voice your process so that we, the people, know what you're doing. Because that makes perfect sense to me as well. That incorporates part of that public community planning piece of it.
And then our point is, our.
But if we don't know what you're doing, then it's not well received.
She said it's been our seventh meeting and this is what the council. She said it's been our seventh meeting and disappointing council on our strategic plan, so it's like, you know, everybody's been just working it over and working it over, and so, and it, you know, it's, it's real trying. My main concern is that, you know, it's written in a manner that everybody could understand when they read it. That's just my main concern, and so, but yeah, I just wanted to move forward with it.
Can I say something? And, and this is to address the public also, working with the council, open eye opening, and the reason why the strategic plan was kind of developed was to kind of create a culture amongst the employees, because, you know, when the leadership on top kind of fails a little bit, then everybody else suffers. So the strategic plan and the mission and the vision statement is to, basically, to create a culture so that we can follow something if there's disarray in our council, so we can continue on to working and everything. There was a program, well, I'm sorry, out of the strategic planning meetings, they went to, they were going to each divisions and everything to kind of assess the programs and everything, and do best on it, you know, that's happened in the past, however many months it's been now since September, to kind of create a direction on better efficiency and all this stuff, so we can work better as a team, as a family, as a culture, whenever, you know, things happen, sometimes things happen, so, and I think that's, this is the reason why it was created for the PBC, so, you know, as employees to have benefits from it and everything, or the people, new people coming on that are employed with us that have never been here before, they can see what the Pawnee Nation is all about. So, approve or not approve, I think that's the, the direction that kind of, we wanted to head in, so, I just wanted to say that much.
Okay, we're on, item number one, approval of resolution 1663, PBC mission statement. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Resolution 1663.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for resolution 1663, I call for the vote.
Darryl Walker.
No.
Fannie Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
No.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1663, mission statement for the Pawnee Business Council passes. So we move on to item number two, resolution 1664, Pawnee Business Council, mission statement.
All right, just like the last, the mission, the vision was created at the same time as the mission, and I'll read it. The Pawnee Nation with abounding pride and cultural and traditional heritage will promote our social, economic, and political advancements to secure common welfare and well-being in our nation and its members through transparency, trust, leadership, and sovereignty.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Same objections.
All right, call for the vote.
Darryl Walker.
No.
Fannie Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
No.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
All right, resolution 1664, PBC mission statement passes. Move on to item number three, approval of resolution 1665, MSPI grant submission.
All right, I present on Tiffany's behalf, this is the methamphetamine and suicide prevention initiative, focus area four grant, that is due, I think, on August 1st. Sapp is the one who's gonna be carrying this grant, and, sorry, I don't remember what the grant was about, I didn't go to the polls on the other day.
Yeah, it's one of their grants that they usually go after.
Parker's over there.
Get with the mic.
I think it's almost strangled around.
We had this grant in the past, and before, we were only allowed 20,000 a year. It opened up last year, but didn't get submitted, and when it came out for opening, I spoke with Tiffany, and I told her I'd like to go for it. And we were allowed to apply for up to 300,000 per year, and if we get the grant, it will go for four years, 2016 through 2020. And then we say, thank being, so I said, well, so we applied for up to the 300,000. And if we're funded, it will provide two jobs for, two prevention workers, which they'll be housed in our building, and we'll be working, focusing on the only, well, I might not even call them drawbacks, but we, in their states, we have to work with kids from eight years of, eight years old up to the age of 24. Once we get those people in, then we can work with the family as a whole. And we plan to do cultural activities with them besides counseling, transporting, and the patient treatment.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1665, the MSPI grant submission for 300,000.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Darryl Walker.
Any, any? All right, go ahead, yeah. Well, I saw her move and raise a hand. Okay.
Darryl Walker.
Yes.
Fannie Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
All right, good. Resolution 1665, it passes. Move on to item number four, resolution 1666, appointment to tax commission, and we are gonna do 1666, 67, and 68 appointments to the tax commission, and can we bring any of those in here?
I don't know.
Okay.
How many positions are?
There are three positions and there are four applicants. I guess we could do top three. What we do is, uh, do top three picks out of the table.
Just put our three, all three names on one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Darryl.
Just put our three, all three names on one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Darryl. Yeah. Cindy, what was your name? Do you have any?
Anne Collins, Beverly Zotai, Roberta Adunko, and one other one.
Martha Only-A-Chief.
Okay. Any other?
And there's three available?
Yes.
Yes.
Martha Only-A-Chief, Anne Collins, Beverly Zotai, and Roberta Adunko. Okay, first one we have, first one we have, we have one for Anne Collins, we have one for Beverly Zotai, and we have one for Martha Only-A-Chief. Next one we have is Martha Only-A-Chief, Anne Collins, and Beverly Zotai. We have one vote for Martha Only-A-Chief, one for Anne Collins, and one for Beverly Zotai. Then we have one vote for Martha Only-A-Chief, one for Beverly Zotai, and one for Anne Collins.
Okay. And so, uh, these three, and they're pretty unanimous as the three, and we will start with resolution 1666, and we can do Anne Collins, or Anne Collins?
Salute.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, call for the vote.
Darryl Walker.
Yes.
Fannie Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
Leanna Q.
Yes.
All right, that's approved, move to, uh, resolution 1668, for the tax commission, Martha Only-A-Chief.
Salute.
We got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, call for the vote.
Darryl Walker.
Yes.
Fannie Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
Leanna Q.
Yes.
All right, so these three have been appointed to the tax commission, good. And we will move to item number seven, and turn it over to Angela.
Okay.
Go to Rachel.
Budget Committee recommendations for approval, this is an approval of a donation request from a tribal member, and you have this in your packet, and I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Did you offer 300, Angela?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes. A, B, C, and D on.
Who made the motion?
Angela.
Second.
Oh, okay, all right. We have a motion, second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Okay, number A, number A is approved, move on to B.
Uh, this is a budget committee approval of a donation request to, from a tribal member, WN, and I make a, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for JG. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Item number C is approved, we move to item D.
Budget Committee request from a tribal member, LE, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of LE say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Item number D is approved, we move to item number E.
Cindy, are these in the packet? The budget?
I'm sorry, I'm getting that. Okay, I apologize. This is a budget committee request or recommendation to approve budget mod number one for the Childcare Development Fund discretionary budget. Uh, the award amount is for 125,477, this is just adding the dollars to this budget. And the amount, the total amount is... 100, the total budget amount is 125,477, and it was increased by 30,302, according to the award letter that we received.
And I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Did you offer 300, Angela?
Uh, yeah. Yes. A, B, C, and D on.
Do we have a motion?
Angela. Okay. We have a motion, second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Okay, number A. Number A is approved. Move on to B.
Uh, this is a Budget Committee Approval of a Donation Request from a Tribal Member, W.N. And I make a... I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. For W.N. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? That passes, we move on to item number C.
This is another Budget Committee Request of a Donation Request from a Tribal Member, J.G. And I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. For J.G. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Item number C is approved. We move to item D.
Budget Committee Request from a Tribal Member, L.E. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of L.E. say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Item number D is approved. We move to item number E.
Cindy, are these in the packet? Okay. This is a Budget Committee Request or Recommendation to Approve Budget Mod Number One for the Childcare Development Fund Discretionary Budget. The award amount is for $125,477. This is just adding the dollars to this budget. And the amount, the total amount is... The total budget amount is $125,477, and it was increased by $30,302, according to the award letter that we received. So I make a motion to approve Budget Mod Number One for the CCDF Discretionary.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, a motion and a second?
Another question.
Okay.
What does CCDF stand for?
Childcare Development Fund.
And just, Angela? Yes, ma'am, just to be clear, they got more money than they thought they would.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor of Approval of Budget Modification Number One, CCDF Discretionary, say yes?
Yes.
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 Any opposed? No? That passes, let's move on to item number F, Approval of Budget Modification Number Two, PSSF.
Budget Committee Recommendation for Approval of the Promoting Safe and Stable Families Budget Mod Number Two, and the amount of... There was a $553 increase. So I make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no? That passes. And we will move to item number H, Approval of Purchase Over 5,000 MIP Renewal, $7,030.
No.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I lost my home.
ICW.
Okay. Approval of Budget Modification Number Two,
This is Approval of Budget Mod Number Two for the Indian Child Welfare BIA Program. So I make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? So that is approved. So we will move to Approval of Purchase Number H, Approval of Purchase Over 5,000, MIP Renewal, $7,039.
This is just a MIP renewal for our funding software that we utilize. And since the cost is over 5,000, it requires Council approval. So I make that motion to approve. The total amount is $7,039, and it will come out of the Finance Division's budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? That passes. Move to Item Number I, Approval of Pawnee Public Schools Luncheon, August 17.
Um, this is a Budget Committee Recommendation for Approval. Received a email from President Pratt regarding a luncheon with the Pawnee Public Schools to do some cultural sensitivity training. And this is approving the funds for that purchase. We don't... It's a... It can come out of our donation line item, not an amount. It's just a luncheon. And we're getting planners donated as well for activities. And we estimated the cost to be lesser than that. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? So that is approved. So we move to Item Number J, Approval of Pawnee Public Schools After-School Tutoring.
Okay, this request was also formed by President Pratt in regard to the after-school tutoring. As we all are aware that the education money has been very limited, and they have had to reduce... They have reduced funding, or budget cuts this year. And the school has approached the tribe to pay for tutoring. We did have the discussion about doing it in-house in our, under our own education division. However, the discussion led to the... The teachers will be the ones who will do the tutoring. They already know the students, they know their weaknesses and the areas that need to be addressed. So we made, with that discussion, Budget Committee made a recommendation, instead of having it in-house, to leave it at the school so that... So that the teachers, that who are already familiar with these students can provide the tutoring and pinpoint and meet the needs of each of those students. The total amount is... To fund two tutors will be $6,914 budget. I make that motion to approve.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
I just wanted to say that, you know, they didn't have this last year, and I have grandchildren in middle school. And my grandson, I always ask him, you know, keep up on his grades and stuff, because he likes to play sports. He has to have good grades. And he said he really missed the children. That it really, he really had to work. So I really, I really kind of don't like us having to give more money, because I know they get a lot of money from our Indian kids up there at the school, you know? But I know this program works. So, you know, I have to support. I had to say that, because, you know, like I said, I was kind of, you know, against it in the beginning, and just thinking, well, they need to tighten their budget streams, you know? But still, yet, you know, I know that it's working in-house. So, you know, I just wanted to say that.
Is this exclusively for Pawnee kids, or is it...
It's for...
Everybody? Oh, that's good.
And just to add to that, I think Ned is going to be teaching a class because of the shortfall. And he's the superintendent, so.
Hand coach.
Right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? So that passes?
Yes.
All right.
Jumping to the additional items, K. This is Approval of Tribal Member Donation Request, not for three, not for the amount, but to... Her specific request was for a purchase of an AC. They are elders, they've already depleted the elders assistance fund, but it's middle of summer, needs an air conditioner. And we are, Budget Committee is approving the purchase of an AC, and we will do it through the P.O. process.
That's because of health reasons, right?
Um, no, it's hot.
I mean, I thought there was a continuing circumstances on the health condition.
Not required.
On this one? The other?
Sorry. Was it on CS? Did you... I didn't recall any. This is a... So she is denied the... Okay, because she's not in the waiting house. It's my understanding she was a elder. The other sister.
She thinks you're human.
Oh, okay. It wasn't in the request that I received. Okay, okay. Okay, so yes, there is a health issue.
When were the policies for lighting for air conditioning?
Uh, they did, they were denied in lighting, according, and I did check with Tiffany.
How good are the policies?
You have to ask the program. We don't know the policies of lighting. I don't know what the... They had the hours income-based.
We discussed this with Jeff.
Families' lives.
And looked into it for us. That's the reasons for you guys. And if she wasn't able to help out.
Well, they might have used it. Otherwise, they would have been able to save.
Yes. Yes, that is it.
All right.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Okay, K is passing.
Item L is another Budget Committee Tribal Member Donation Request for an AC. This one isn't elder. And we, I did contact Tiffany. And the issue is they probably could be assisted through emergency assistance. However, with the heat, they may have to wait two weeks for them to go through her process to get them an AC. And we felt like with the heat being in the hundreds, and they're elder, that we forwarded on to Council for approval. So I make that motion to approve. It's for the purchase of an AC.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Item L passes.
Okay, this is Approval of the 2016 It's an amount of $5,427. It's a new budget for them to operate under this year. It's budget recommendation to take the $5,427 instead of appropriating it from proceeds of labor or SALASAR dollars, that we reduce Council's budget on some donations and subscription, as well as donations. I think we took about $1,257 out of donations, and the majority out of subscriptions. We have $10,000 balance of subscriptions and memberships. The only thing that's coming out of it this year is the NCAI amount that's been approved. And so that left a savings there. We took the balance. So that's on the agenda, as well as the budget mod to transfer it to the Lincoln Control Commission. So I make that motion to approve.
All right. Motion is made, is there a second?
I will second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Item M passes. Move to item N now.
Okay. Approval of PVC Budget Mod Number Five. Those were in the additional items packet that Cindy sent out. All of these are. Okay. Budget request is removing that $5,257,000 out of those line items of donation and subscription. So I make a motion to approve Budget Mod Number Five. I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? So item N passes. We move to item O.
Item number six is PVC Budget Mod Number Six. I don't think this is the right one. Yeah, but it says 800.
The first one in the packet, sorry. I don't have the attention. The packet that was sitting on the desk is correct. But the one that I sent out.
Oh, okay.
It is changed to 400.
Okay. If you look in the packet that's on here, it's 400. What this is doing is there was donations made from Tribal Development Corporation and the Housing Authority, total amount of $400 to purchase planners for the schools, for the students up there. And so in order to be able to expend the dollars we had to include it in the budget, we put it into Council's budgets to do so. So I make that motion to approve Pawnee Business Council Budget Mod Number Six.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Item O passes. Move to item E.
Um, this is Approval of Resolution 1670. Is that correct? That number?
Yeah.
Resolution 1670. This is for the Pawnee Nation Resource Center Budget, as well to appropriate $70,750 from the SALASAR proceeds account to the leverage resources for the Pawnee Nation Resource Center. What had taken place is we approved the CMP... Is that what it is? CMP by Resolution, which includes the total amount of the project at $903,000 and plus. And when she did her Budget Mod, she was short by about $137,000. The total leverage resources was $288,000 and some change. Not change, but dollars, like about $286. And we have $218,000 in the HCP account, which is an investment account that has been utilized for this project. And so that offsetted it, offsetted it, offset the $288,000 and left a balance of $70,750. So although we approved the CMP at $903,000 something, there was still an unfunded balance of $70,750 that we had to appropriate. And in order to appropriate those dollars from either SALASAR or proceeds of labor, we had to do it by Resolution. So it's my recommendation, or not mine, Budget Committee's recommendation to approve Resolution 1670 for leverage funds for the Pawnee Nation Resource Center project. With the caveat, too, there may be some potential savings at the end, but we wanted to go ahead and give her the full amount just in case other things come about. And so she's thinking that there might be... She might not leave all the $70,000. She may only... There might be additional savings of $14,000 that can be transferred back.
We know there's $24,000 savings.
Right.
And I just wanted to get clarification. When you say HCP, you're talking about the Health Center project?
Yes.
From 2000, ended in 2003?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
It's the what?
Health Center project.
The clinic that we built?
In 2006.
Do we, do we put supporting documentation into all of these mods? Okay. Because we've done a lot of them. I'm like, how do we keep track of what we're doing? Okay, that's good.
Oh, I make that motion to approve Resolution 1670.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? This is a resolution, so I call for the vote.
Darrell Lockhead.
Yes.
Jamie Livingston? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison?
Yes.
Ronnie Hare?
Yes.
Leanna Pugh?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 1670. ICDPG leverage funds for PNRC project is approved. We move to item Q.
Item Q is Approval of the 2016 Cultural Resource Fund Budget. I believe that I forwarded to you a little bit of that. This is the budget that was funded for the language program. It's a private foundation, I believe. And the total amount is $40,000. And it covers the professional service contracts from the linguistics folks, as well as some reproduction travel costs for the professional services and staff, as well as training. I make a motion to approve 2016 CRF budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? So item Q passes. You did hear it. That's a vote. So we will move to item number eight, Approval of Amendment to Resolution 1592, You need to get a closer of Arthur. He's almost looking sharp.
Good evening, Council. Here to answer the questions as if you had any questions of the amendment. But um, the amendment for the resolution you guys passed back in November or December just needs to be changed because it was referencing um, the wrong section. I'm going to approve order tonight, I see.
Okay, so it, the ordinance has already went through NIGC review and they are okay with everything. We just need to pass the resolution to give that. We, we kind of got an update yesterday from Heather, what's her last name? Yeah. And who was an attorney with NIGC. And um, she said it was, it's on our agenda for tomorrow. And I didn't, when we were talking, I didn't realize it was on the table. And it was. So all this um, um, I don't know. I, my understanding of this is, was there were some issues with, with this? But we, I guess we got a close resolve that. I, I guess I'm just trying to, to find out so that it doesn't happen again. But, but what is my understanding incorrectly, if I'm wrong? Because um, that we sent it to them and there was some changes in there that they weren't aware of? And they sent it back to us?
So, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and remember when we asked for the amendment, we presented it to you guys and um, it was just referencing the wrong material. Um, don't make it that's too long if you make it basically. Uh, there was a couple of changes made and those changes made it into the final, kind of the final document that we were utilizing for our casinos and everything. We got all those cleared up and that's why it's important tonight to be able to get to NIGC to get approval.
Okay. And then they, do they have another ninety days to approve this?
Uh, I'm not sure of the timeline, but we, as you pointed out, there are people waiting on our submission to be able to get this batch back through, so.
Okay, great.
And it's okay to have it amended and not having to do a whole new resolution? That's right?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Resolution fifteen ninety-two.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the amendment to Resolution fifteen ninety-two. And we'll call for the vote.
Oh, one more question. Now, is this the one that it has, this has to be approved because we're lowering the age out to stonewall?
Uh, the age requirement somehow ended up in our ordinance. So it's law. We can't have um, gamblers under the age of twenty-one that's stonewalling this thing up for just, just by the way it was created. So that's why, that's why we're changing it.
But, but this has something to do with that, right?
We're trying to lower the age at.
Yeah.
Pretty much all right. So it gets a certain flicker, basically.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clarified. So it's kind of a type, kind of a typographical error? I mean, I'm looking at it and saying that you wanna, whereas it used to be changed from twelve to under ten-one. Why wouldn't that do it?
The document we were referencing when we got it first approved, or um, we presented it to you guys was wrong. And so we clarified all that through everybody and we have the correct references now, yeah. It's not just a typo. It's not just somebody puts something somewhere. It's, it's a long chain of events that started back in two thousand thirteen, so.
Okay.
Ready for vote?
Yeah.
There are all caps.
Yes.
Sammy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison, yes. Donna Hare?
Yes.
Leanna Tiede?
Yes.
Okay. So um, the approval of amendment to Resolution fifteen ninety-two gaming ordinance passes.
Thank you, council.
Then you are.
Thank you. And so we move to item number nine, approval of Resolution sixteen sixty-nine, Water Resources Management Proposal.
Is it sixty-eight, sixty-nine? Sixty-nine, six?
Sixty-nine, sixty.
Good evening, council. Uh, I can, I can speak a little bit to this one. Uh, this, this kind of came out of nowhere, but it's a good, good news thing for us. Uh, the BIA approved uh, the PONI Nation for the Water Resources Management Plan. Uh, so we can start qualifying our water rights here in our jurisdiction. Um, this is a, a good thing. A lot of tribes apply for this every year and it's hardly ever given out because once the BIA get this grant out, it becomes a sustainable grant because the, the BIA will continue to fund the program. I mean, we still have to apply every year, but they will continue to fund the program until our water rights are qualified. Uh, we were approved, we, we originally spent the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were approved at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, then we found out uh, last week that the BIA found some discretionary funds for us to use to add to the, I think it's, it's close to fifty thousand. I think it's forty-eight thousand and change uh, to use. But the only caveat being we have to spend by, by September uh, because it's, it's for, it was appropriated for this fiscal year. And this grant will begin the process for us to, to establish our water rights within our jurisdiction. Um, PONI has done an outstanding job. He's got the technical expertise. He's already in communication with United States Geological Survey, which is actually going to do the technical aspect of it. And we are also using some of the money to get to NAR so they can do the legal analysis of the water rights because it's kind of a technical and legal thing that's to go through. Uh, but this is a really important first step for the PONI Nation and it's, it comes at a timely moment because we are dealing with the oral gas issues, the fracking issues within our jurisdictional boundaries. And so this will help ensure that our future generations won't have to go through this again. Once these water rights are qualified, they're qualified forever. So it's a good deal.
Second.
We have a motion. Uh, Donna. And then Angela seconded. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, I can call for the vote.
There are all caps.
Yes.
Sammy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Addison, yes. Donna Hare?
Yes.
Leanna Tiede?
Yes.
All right, good. And so that concludes the new business portion of our agenda. And now we move to item number ten, open forum.
I have time for open forum. Um, I'm asking to be excused from um, the joint meeting with the college tomorrow. I need to, I haven't, I'm trying to get it to the doctor.
Okay. Can I?
Please excuse me. Thank you.
We have a joint meeting with college.
Yes, we have a continued planning session at two o'clock in the morning with college. It was set up weeks ago.
Well, I mean, I saw, I saw, I didn't realize it was with college. I just saw the church. Okay.
Yeah, there were, you got some board trustees members flying in from outside.
Good. Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to comment uh, on this elders and this heat, this horrible heat. And I can imagine anybody doing without air conditioning. I just wonder if the council might think about looking in. I don't know if this is possible. But can the housing authority do something to help? I don't want, I don't want to discuss it. I just want to put it on your plate so maybe y'all can look into it.
Well, uh, in answer to that, we, we have, I don't know if we've set up a meeting or we are going to set up a meeting this month of July, which is jam-packed with meetings for, for us. And, and so we are setting up a meeting with PONI Business Council and the housing authority to discuss that and we'll discuss it.
Is it going to be open forum meeting?
It'll be between us and them this Thursday.
So the public isn't invited?
Not, not possibly.
It, it's a shame that they don't have public meetings. Well, they have meetings at housing, you might go to. I mean, a public meeting between council and housing and everybody. The whole thing is too with me, my, my mom didn't, I told you that. She, my mother didn't have air conditioning. Her conditioning unit went out.
Know that.
No. And, and housing's not gonna help her.
Isn't housing uh, authorized under the state?
It is a state.
So why don't they be compliant? Open meetings law, open state open meetings law.
They are, but they meet.
I mean, for this meeting. Anyway.
Because we're just trying to get open communication, start communications with all the entities in the tribe and we're just having joint meetings.
I'm not saying it's bad. I'm glad y'all are good.
Me too. And they don't know about it.
Thank you.
Some, some tribes, some tribes have gone out and bought air conditioning units, you know, a, a, a cost or whatever. Uh, spent a few thousand dollars and had these units available for people that didn't have it. See? My mother went out and bought these little mini, and that's the size of this, you know, for her windows. That's all she could afford, but no one would help her. Shameful.
Not even her family?
Well, yeah. Well, yeah, us.
Yeah, well, that's what we've been doing a lot.
Well, so. It's unfortunate that there's a lot of people that are benefiting from those programs. I understand that we can talk about it when we meet with housing. I can't wait. We'll see.
Got it.
Um, Ms. Dunn will bring you up a good point. We really need to look into the open meeting pact with, or law with the state when we proceed. Cause they are under that requirement.
Okay.
We really need to look.
It is a matter of.
Bruce.
Open forum?
I'm open for business. Little red pie. Pumpkin pie with Coolit.
Oh my God.
And are, are you selling or raffling or giving away?
Well, man, I have a whole pumpkin pie if anybody wants to buy it. And for the month of July, I have raised, well, me and Title Six have raised a hundred and fifty-six dollars plus whatever I get out of you guys tonight. And this money, this money is going directly back to Title Six. We're not like the other fundraisers. Our money goes back to Title Six. Cause we have to, because we're, we use part of our money to go to NAR.
There you go.
So are you raffling or selling?
Raffling. No, I'm raffling.
Okay.
Raffles are on land stays.
Okay.
Like, like.
May I get excused or like go to Kuzcotte and we have to be there online?
Okay. All right, um.
Open up.
Okay.
I'll say that.
Well, if that's uh, it for open forum. And uh, I will entertain a motion to uh, overturn. Have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Go on to seconds. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And we will proceed to leave. All right, thank you very much.
Remember just got pies over there for sale.
Nobody can leave. They buy a piece of pie. Thank you. Thank you.